That haircut, it looks like fourteen.
Yeah, I know.
Every time that I go to a different website and it turns off again, if I do the same thing again, my disconnect reconnecting comes back. But then every time I go to a new site, it ends up turning off again.
They're gonna set them up with a.
Yeah, but it just turned off.
Yeah, he will leave one of his.
Should I turn that?
I'm gonna call the public meeting for the Board of Education. Open at five thirty-one P M. Kevin.
Do this one.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I use this in meetings.
Good afternoon, everybody. I can really enjoy this beautiful weather. We're gonna move on in our agenda to a public comment. But before we do this, we just read this excerpt. The Board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the Board on matters within the Board's authority. On behalf of the Board, I wish to remind those offering comments that consistent with our bylaws, we ask that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes, and there is a maximum of thirty minutes for each subject matter. All speakers must maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be direct to the Board and not to any individual Board member or individual member of the administration. As noted, public comment is your opportunity to convey your views to the Board, but it is not a question-and-answer session. The Board and the administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during the public comment period. The Board and the administration will determine whether, when, and how to address questions that arise during the public comment period. Lastly, when you come to the microphone, right up front here, have a seat. Get comfortable, but please state your full name and address for the record. During that, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
First person is Jessica Quay.
Hello, my name is Jessica Quay. Is this on? I don't think it's on. I don't know. You think it's on?
I don't hear you on this.
Do you? Yeah, okay. Okay, Jessica Quay, three twenty-one Old Canterbury Turnpike. Um, I'm just here today to say a brief comment about the uniform policy. We are hopeful that you guys are going to take some parent feedback into consideration. This is something that I have advocated for for five years since my kids have started school. Um, I feel strongly that, uh, it would be helpful to us not to have to have the extra, uh, cost of uniforms every year. I don't know if you guys have been in the school, but lately hardly anybody is wearing them. It's not enforced. Um, and I don't have a problem with it. I love it. Um, I think it promotes so much creativity and individuality in kids. And, um, I just, I would like to see some modifications and accommodations for the, you know, the people that you have surveyed, the opinions that you've received, and I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next.
My name is Clark Quay. This is my, this is my opinion on uniforms. One, uniforms make us all look the same. I want, two, I want to be comfy. Number three, clothes that I wear after school make me feel so pretty. Number four, uniforms are boring. I like to be creative.
Uh, we have Robert Lean, I believe it is.
Alan.
Robert Allen, eight West Town Street. Uh, good evening. First off, I want to thank Chairperson Robert Aldai for his professional handling of the misconduct of one of the Board members on the recent, uh, past month. As a family, we realize that his boundaries are limited to what he can do uh, to the Board member that breaks rules, uh, to the most sacred level, which are honestly, um, trust and privacy. Whether Heather Fowler, Heather Chapman, Fight for Freedom Seventeen, uh, whatever name she wants to go under, as far as we're concerned, is an embarrassment to the Board of Education, Republican Party, and the taxpayers of Norwich. She took our eleven-year-old daughter, uh, uh, eleven-year-old daughter's assault and used it for her own benefit and her own agenda. She had no problem exploiting our child for her own gain. This egregious act should not go unpunished. Less than sixty days after her, she was received, the whole Board received training. This act was committed, and retraining, I don't think is gonna help. You haven't even issued a public apology to anyone involved. Your words now mean nothing anyway. In my opinion, you're a disgrace to the people you're representing. Nothing less than your resignation tonight is acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jennifer Sharnowski, I believe.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Sharnowski. Um, I live at eight West Town Street. Um, my daughter Ava Allen had been assaulted, um, at school, a random act, which is very upsetting to hear to begin with. Um, however, the most upsetting part of it all, after I had meetings with the administrators of Kelly Middle School, and we sat down together and we developed a plan that would help not just my daughter being the victim, but other victims out there. Because from what I can see and what I have read and what I see in my own personal workday is there's parameters set for the perpetrator, but there's never the thought of what happens to the victim or the victim's surrounding. But what was more alarming than the whole incident itself was after I sent a letter to each individual member of the Board of Ed seeking help and seeking to come up with policies, policies that we could work together, not that a parent vigilante would come after the schools over, that I received an anonymous email from Fight for Freedom Connecticut Seventeen. My first reaction was, who is this? So after they had asked if I would share my information with other parents, because these occurrences are happening all the time in our schools, I asked, how did you get my email? How did you find my purse, daughter's personal story? The lies that I was told were, I hear things through a grapevine. It was accidentally forwarded to me, and it came to me from one of my parent groups. The email sent to me was used as an alias email from Fight for Freedom Connecticut Seventeen, which we come to find out was Heather Fowler, Heather Chapman. When I sent the letter to the Board, I used the email, h Fowler@norwichpublicschools.org. If nothing shady was being done, if nothing unethical was being done, if that email wasn't being shared to parent groups, why wouldn't I have gotten a response back from the Board of Ed email designated to that, to that member? Instead, I got an alias email asking to share my story with parent groups. So with that being said, on the community forum, Heather once posted, I don't trust anyone with my child, including teachers. I asked, how do we trust a Board of Ed member who shares private personal information about an assault?
Chairman. I can't, I, I just, I'm ready to go, but.
You can't, this is one person, you can't.
Okay, okay, so how, how can one Board member share that type of information under an alias email? Is my question. How can that person represent the Board of Ed and people trust that person? Thank you.
I don't have anyone else.
I, I will say, under the public comment, um, section, we did receive two emails uh, concerning, uh, various matters, both of which we are going, we are not going to, uh, read because the person who was, uh, who sent them should have come to that, our, our meeting and presented his or her own views. However, we will look into the matters and, uh, explore it with, as, as the Board. Every, every Board member got a copy of the letters. Is there anybody else for public comment? Is there anybody else for public comment? Anybody else for public comment? Public comment is closed. Next agenda item, one point three, approval of the minutes of the Board of Education meeting dated March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Motion is in, in order.
Karen Daniels, motion to approve the minutes for March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Kevin Sitani, I will second that motion.
Then we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted. Item number one point four, approval of minutes on a special Board meeting on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. There's a, uh, motion is in order.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Karen Daniels, second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor and seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted. Item number one point five, approval of the minutes on the Special Board of Education meeting held April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Motion is in order.
Kevin Sitani, motion to approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting on April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Have a second, Kevin? We have a motion on the floor and seconded. Any concerns, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Let's go to reports, reports of the chairperson last night. Myself, Dr. Stringfellow, and Bob Zepensky presented our two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Ed, Board of Education budget to the entire City Council. It was quite informative and extraordinarily detailed in nature. For the most part, there was a mutual understanding in our efforts to present a fiscally, fiscally responsible budget, which brought specific questions from members of the council, council, which were answered by either Dr. Stringfellow or Bob in a very professional and open-minded manner. Emphasis was given to the fact that the Board reinforced its steadfast agreement with the council regarding the non-lapsing accounts. Given the current economic times and the still very presence of COVID nineteen and its variant strains, the Board of Ed pledges to the, pledged to the City Council that we will continue to work with them as a team to minimize the financial impact, if any, to the taxpayers of the City of Norwich. That's all I have to report. Next item, the superintendent.
Thank you so much. Um, the first item of, of business really, um, is board appreciationalized teaching. Um, just to let you know that we appreciate you and your, your volunteerism and philanthropy for the students of the Norwich Public Schools, and, um, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's totally Amber, but I, I will take credit for it. And, um, our recognition awards, um, are, are in order also for this evening. We honored with the Key is Me Award. The teacher recipient is Mandi Bruehl from Stanton Elementary School, kindergarten teacher. And the rationale that accompanied the nomination is that this teacher has high standards socially, emotionally, and academically. She makes sure that all students are included, welcomed, and successful in her classroom. She prepares all of her students for social interactions with others and reminds them to be kind and cooperative. Uh, when you enter her classroom, you see students on task and smiling while they're learning. Her teaching is the perfect example of love with firm expectations that allows students to meet their maximum potential. Congratulations, Ms. Bruehl, for your hard work and continued dedication to our students. That was Anastasia Sanctil, grade three student from Roquanik. Uh, it's the You Inspire Me Award, and, and she was nominated by her principal, Mr. Zachmar. And the rationale that accompanied this nomination says that Anastasia is a valued member of the Roquanik School community. She is a dedicated learner and an avid reader who works hard to learn in school and at home. That she will often go above and beyond to do more than what is expected of her each and every day. She is a role model for her peers and is always willing to lend a helping hand and be a caring friend. We are excited to see all that she can achieve. Congratulations. For the last, um, two months of seeing firsthand the I Make a Difference um, Support Staff Award recipient, Ms. Sandra Van Lu of Global Studies. Um, and the, uh, the rationale that accompanied her nomination, she was actually nominated by two different teachers. Um, that this professional supports staff consistently, makes a difference in the lives of the children in our school, always has answers for the infinite number of questions that are asked of her, handles everything professionally, and sometime, somehow maintains her sense of humor. Her multilingual talents are just another example of how she does absolutely everything to help anyone and everyone each day. She is most deserving of this award. Teachers Global is lucky to have her as a part of their community. Congratulations, Sandra. I was gonna briefly report on the budget last evening, but I, I think that it's hard to, um, uh, go after the, the chairman and his comments. Um, we, we echo on, on behalf of the staff that the pandemic has brought illness and loss, isolation, and financial instability and distress to the citizens of Norwich. And we, we, um, will partner with the city to make certain that the impact is, uh, is not significant while not compromising the education of our children. And that will be difficult, but, um, I, I believe that this group, um, has the, the ability to, um, you know, meet the, the manager's expectations. Uh, I'd like to briefly let you know that, um, a follow-up, um, regarding correspondence to the Commissioner of Education and the Board of Education in Connecticut. Uh, as you know, we had two days this year that were, uh, canceled days, not due to weather. And the Commissioner of Education sent something out to every superintendent saying, for this COVID year, this pandemic, if you have an unforeseen emergency that you could not have anticipated whereby you had to cancel school, please send us a letter, and we'll be happy to forward it to the Board of Education in Connecticut to ask for forgiveness of, of that day or two. And so on, I took her seriously, and, um, on March seventh, uh, I asked her to forgive the two days. One day was, um, December seventeenth. As you may recall, as of three o'clock in the morning, Norwich police were investigating a threat to student and sta, staff safety, uh, which was, uh, locating the allegation of a gun. Um, and thankfully, that it turned out to be a picture of a, of a weapon and not a weapon. But we didn't know that at three o'clock in the morning, and, um, eventually I had to go to bed. So I made the call at three A M. and we canceled school, and, and we, we received a great deal of support from families and, and teachers, and we're very appreciative of that. Um, but it was an unforeseen circumstance. Um, the other unforeseen circumstance was the day on, uh, January fourteenth, when we had a hundred and thirty-three staff absences, all related to COVID nineteen. So we had over eighty, um, individual staff members who were themselves sick or quarantining. And the remainder of the absences were folks caring for family members, mostly their children, who were sick or quarantining. We only had forty staff members who were well enough to take their place on that day, and regrettably, we, we needed to cancel school. Um, the Commissioner, uh, hosted a meeting with me. Uh, I, I wondered why that didn't come in a letter instead of a Zoom, but it was very courteous of her to, to, to meet with me. Um, she said I could still go to the State Board of Education and plead my case, but without her support, that would be nearly impossible, so I thanked her, and we were denied. Um, I asked if anyone else in the state of Connecticut had made such a request, and they had not. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna chalk it up to, like, New Girl to Connecticut, uh, oh, that everyone else knew they would be denied, but I tried. Um, and I thought that maybe on those days, we could have some sort of a celebration or a, like a social, emotional learning activity or something really enjoyable for the kids, but it could be optional, you know, for kids and teachers. Um, but I wanted to update you in case you, you saw, saw of it or if it was reported to you. Um, the, uh, we have an update to our school resource officers. Um, we, Officer McKinney and Officer Miechel are really, uh, wonderful, wonderful additions to our team at the middle school. What we realized in the month that they've been working with us is that, I, I don't think anyone realized, except maybe the elementary principals, how many times the police are called to an elementary school or, or, or preschool during the school day, largely for adults, but sometimes for students who brought in prohibited items or, um, as an investigation, uh, sometimes cyber investigation, uh, left over from the night before that family members were really worried about, and they've called the police. Um, and so I, I got to see firsthand, being at Global, you know, having, having the officer there as a resource to us, and then having him taken away to go to the needs of the elementary school. And so in brainstorming with the chief of police, we decided to utilize some S R three grant money um, to bring on our, our alternate substitute, Officer Jared Homend, um, Holmond. I wrote that phonetically, so I would remember how to say it and still didn't say it correctly. I apologize. Um, Officer Holmond started yesterday, and he is earmarked to, um, go to each of the elementary schools, make certain that he knows the physical layout of the campuses, work on, um, uh, you know, Alice training techniques, um, and, uh, fire drills, um, it, it during the time that he is not, uh, needed for investigations. That will permit the two middle school resource offices to be here for the full of the day. Um, they are also very committed to making home visits, which has been really wonderful and received warmly, um, by parents, and has helped to bring kids into school who were struggling to get to school on that day. Um, so I wanted to give you an update. Um, I gave you our, uh, typical, uh, vaccination rates. They're climbing still in a few of our schools. Our COVID data report of the COVID rates in Norwich, and then, you know, I was taking a look at what it looks like historically, and it was, um, interesting data to do a year-by-year, side-by-side comparison of the trends. I think I'm gonna buckle down for, uh, December ninth through the fourteenth next year and hope it goes smoothly. But that seems to be the time when this, uh, ticks up again. And I've listed the events that I've attended in the upcoming meetings that we look forward to. Um, that's our report for this evening.
Thank you. Moving on, reports of the Assistant Superintendent.
I don't think that's on, so I'll just speak up, so hopefully everyone can hear me. Um, as of April first, with regards to McKinney Vento, we have had, uh, an additional, uh, an increase of twelve, um, families experiencing homelessness that have been identified. Uh, we are expecting to have more, identify more families experiencing homelessness, um, as a result of maybe families living with other families, uh, to provide supports. Um, so some of the supports that families are receiving are, um, uniforms and backpacks and supplies. We recently, um, received approval from the State Department of Education um, for the, uh, S R homelessness grant, which, uh, will be designed for supporting families experiencing homelessness with temporary housing, um, such that we can connect them with, uh, community-based organizations to provide additional help and support. Um, in terms of, um, I'm just highlighting a few things, uh, that are in my report, um, under academics. I am so proud to be the one to say, sit here and say that we have ten winners in the district who will be competing for the state finals for in, in convention, convention. And their names are listed, if you, uh, don't wanna butcher their names. Um, so please forgive me in advance, but the winners include, uh, Rose Alseus, Jacinda Wright, Honaris Montez, uh, the Montez from Kelly, um, Evy Roske, Gia Denz, Denizar, Lisa Patel, Kaya Casati from Moriarty, and Alina Jaronko, uh, Isabel Ontario Van Lu, and John Jaronko. Uh, so let's just congratulate those students. Seventh grade sciences collaborating with Project O and Mystic to support the ecosystem dynamics unit. So we're very proud and happy about that. Um, more good news. Uh, we have a population of six hundred seventy-five active E L students that are in our district database. Eighty of those students have been exited and are continuing to be monitored to make sure that they maintain their progress. Dr. Stringfellow kind of reported already on S R O, so I'm gonna continue moving forward uh, and move towards just the, the volunteer and community engagement. Um, so Mahan had scheduled on March twenty-eighth, the Harlem Wizards, who played against staff on that evening, and we also, at Global, April first, there was a school dance where, just wanna thank our P T O. They, uh, supported us tremendously, um, as well as our parent volunteers, and we had about twenty parent volunteers who showed out and helped out. It was a wonderful event.
And you danced.
I did.
Because a volunteer sent that.
I did.
I think it confused the children a little bit. They're like, she's pretty cool.
Had a little, keep up with a little bit. I'll pay for it the next day. Um, for adult education, uh, the State Department, uh, Division overseeing adult education, they recently went through a compliance review, and in that compliance review, there were sixty-seven areas in which that were reviewed, and we, we are proud to say that there was only one related, uh, issue that needed to be addressed, and since then, that rem, that area has been remedied. At this time, that concludes my report, and I open up to you with questions.
I just have one question, if it, when it concerns, and it does concern the homelessness and the, uh, the S R funds. Is there a way that, to branch off of the, of the homelessness, is there a way to, with, in conjunction with our school buses and our student, our Director of, um, Transportation? to somehow save or keep a bus running throughout the morning and early afternoon for those students and parents who have appointments that they need to get to?
So it's interesting that you mentioned that because one of the things that I, we noticed having been in the schools, that several times, parents will say, I can't come and pick up my child. I don't have access to a car. I can't come to an IEP meeting. I'd like to be present in person, et cetera. And so Mr. Solomon, the city manager, put me in touch with the local, I can't think of the name of it.
Can't take it.
Yes, seat. And they mapped out where all the public transportation spots are. But they don't have any way of giving us public transportation. And the school bus transportation, we could look into for the children, but not for the parents. And so, so we're negotiating that now. Something that it reminded me of, that I was able to do in my last school department, is that the seat program can only have those smaller buses for a short period of time. And then they have to give them away to a philanthropic agency. And so we were a recipient of a bus in Rhode Island. And the requirements to drive the bus if the parent is there was not the CDL or a bus driver's license. It was more of a, like a Uber license or a cab license. And so we're looking into that piece of it. But we could, we have sent a bus for kids who have been late. Sometimes what ends up happening is the parent feedback will be, please don't do this ever again. Cause then they know they have permission to sleep till ten o'clock in the morning. So we've struggled with that a little bit. And sometimes we've had a bus swing back who, when children have missed their bus, particularly at the middle school because they're the late bus. But we'll keep working on that and I forgot to report on that.
That's okay. It was brought to my attention, brought to, and it's a genuine concern. And I misspoke when I said I wanted the parents on the bus. What I was, what I wanted to make sure to get across was, you know, they have a doctor's appointment. They gotta take a bus, a transfer, another transfer. It eats up a majority of the time.
It's hours.
Yes.
Hours. They reported out on that at our race equity meeting. Sheila Hayes brought up that it could take four or five hours just to bring your child to the dentist if you're without a car, depending upon where you're transferring to. Yep. I think it's very worthwhile to investigate. And if, you know, if the board agrees, we'd like to.
If we can get them back into school at an earlier time.
Right.
I think it's a win-win for everyone, including the parents and especially the students.
Agreed.
Perhaps they could also look into sharing the senior van. I don't know if it's occupied all the time or there are possible hours where it might be free. I know that's used quite a bit for taking people to appointments and whatnot. Even like a ride share agreement with them. I don't know.
Correct me if I'm wrong though, if our buses run from six AM to six PM, five days a week. We pay for that twelve hours. Am I correct? There's gotta be some downtime for those drivers and those buses. That's what I, that's what I.
The problem is that we have a three-tier busing situation with NFA and our area high schools and out-of-district special education schools. And so we often, especially this year with the driver shortage, we often don't have an extra bus that's available to us. Sometimes we do. It depends on the time of day. But we can, we can press on that and figure out what are our options? What is available? Because we agree with you. It was, it's been very difficult for people to now participate as we're opening up the schools. And they, the doctors and dentist visits is a problem. Hopefully the facilities committee can bring us new facilities with some doctor dental, UCFS or other provider for every school. That would be great too.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the Assistant Superintendent? Thank you, Tamara. That's the report of the Director of Student Services, Jamie Bender.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. Here we are in April. And for those of you who have been here for a while, you know that this is the time when I submit my proposal for our IDEA grant funding for your approval. The application is actually due May twelfth. This allows us some time to, for you to consider it and hopefully cast your hope for approval tonight. Most of the entitlement grant, when I talk about entitlement grant, it means that I don't have, it's not a competition. We're entitled to receive funds from the federal government via the state of Connecticut to support our students' disabilities. And as you can see in my report, that is not a grant where we, you know, supplant. We are using it for those excess services that we provide to students. For the most part, this grant provides salaries for ten certified teaching staff. Mainly right now, my strive is essentially separate classrooms that you know really provide significant service to our students here in Norwich. It also covers about seven or so paraprofessional staff and one of our administrators. In addition to that, I'm able to kind of earmark some for those special professional developments that we need or consultation. But for the most part, this grant cover salaries that we need for our students with special needs. Any questions so far about my IDEA grant? So part of it is, part of the grant, six eleven, kind of supports students, the whole gamut of special education needs, three through twenty-one. And then there's the section six nineteen, that's really earmarked for our younger students. And you can see the funding amounts. We pretty much from year to year hold steady with the preliminary allocations that were given. But later on with the numbers that the state of Connecticut tweaks, we're given a final amount later on. So there could be some adjustment as we move forward. There's also a portion of that federal funding that has to be designated for our students in our currently placed private schools in Norwich. And they have a formula that they calculate what that proportion is. And you can see how much we're going to provide around that six eleven. And then also how much for the younger students, six nineteen. That's solely based on the numbers of students that we have in those schools. And the way that we've been using those funds is to allow those schools to hire people to support our students with disabilities in those locations. And then we reimburse them, which is an allowable expenditure for the IDEA. You can see that, you know, our numbers have dropped a little bit this year in terms of the amount of students. So that directly correlates with the funding source that comes to us. That's not a, that's not a bad thing. That's, that means that we're providing services in a different way. We might be, you know, using interventions that prevent a referral to special education, but that's what these numbers mean. Any questions about the IDEA grant?
Yeah, Jamie, the chart's a little unclear because you show preliminary data, twenty-two, twenty-four, and then you've got two dates, twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty dash twenty-two.
Those are our former years. So the IDEA grant.
So there is an overlap?
Yes. It's a two-year grant. And that means we have two years to spend the money. Certain things, like the proportionate share for our private schools, they really want us to use that set aside money the first year, year one. So that like as an example for the preliminary, it's thirty-two thousand, six hundred thirteen, eighty-eight cents. They really want us to use that that first year of the grant. I have gotten special permission to push that forward to the next year because as we have all experienced, there has been some, you know, unsettled staffing issues in our schools, including our private schools. So some of that funding is still residual. So I already sought permission to kind of roll that over to the next year so that they still have those funds available to them. But, you know, it's for the, for the next year. So two-year grant for most items, except for the set aside for the proportionate share. Does that help clear it up, Mark? So we got grants. We're gonna get a grant for this.
All right. So the thing that says preliminary, that's also a two-year grant which overlaps the previous.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. There's always, there's always an overlap. When I say preliminary, because it's not, you know, they have to go through their.
Right. Because you're applying for that grant now.
They've given me, you know, they've given the allocation and that's the preliminary figure that they've allocated. And that's why based on that. So there's the IDEA information for this year. You also have my typical monthly reports. You can see that the out-of-district placements are kind of holding steady. But they're, you know, but as I've mentioned throughout, there have been needs. But we're still doing a really good job at having kids come back like this. So there's been some, you know, every month we seem to have like kids be able to enjoy their experiences back in our public school because of the programs that we have. So that's still happening. You just might not see that reflected in the final moment. And then our current homeschooling number. So twenty-four. Any questions?
Thank you, Jamie. Moving on to the report of the Business Administrator, Keeper of the Records.
Good evening.
Bob Sapansky.
Nice to have a nice day here today. And the primary focus of my report tonight will be a condensed version of what Dr. Stringfellow and I presented to the city council. And we appreciated the support of board members who were there. But before I get started, I have a little feel-good story. Our local Staples store, Staples in general was purchased by a private concern a couple of years ago. And one of the main focuses or philanthropic points that the owners have is to give back to your communities, especially schools. So last Friday, I received a call from the store manager down in Northern Terrekes asking me to come down and see if we wanted to be part of the program starting Sunday. So I had to make a decision right there on Friday. What they, if you go into Staples, you'll see a nice colorful sign like this. And as often when you go to stores, they ask you if you want to donate to some particular cause. Well, we have three schools probably within two miles of the Staples store, Mahan, Stanton, and Global. So they will ask when you check out if you'd like to donate five dollars for a donation kit for the public school system. And this is what the kit is. It has nineteen things in it. I didn't make copies. Pass this around if you want to see what's in it. So the campaign will run for, I believe, it's three months. And then in the summertime, they'll call me up and say, come get your stuff. And we don't know how responsive the community will be. But Staples in the past has said it's usually a very successful campaign. And then Dr. Stringfellow and Tamara and Jamie can help figure out how we'll distribute the school supplies to our schools. So I think that's a pretty cool story.
There it is.
So now I'll move on to the, a little bit of update on the facilities. As you might recall, in March, we had a boiler failure at Teachers. Now, it seems like gee, in March, we should be able to have no problem getting this fixed by the heating season. But it's actually going to be a fairly tight schedule. We contract with Van Zelm engineers to design a system that would be appropriate for the school. Keeping in mind that we most likely will have a builders new building project there. So we've had two site visits with them. They anticipate having preliminary drawings done by June with final construction documents to go out by the end of June. So we hope to have the boilers that would go into the system specified so we can order them ahead of time. There could be a twelve to sixteen week lead time. So if you do calendar math, that might put us into receiving the boilers July and August. So we need to get them installed in the summertime. So going back to when we did the Stanton boilers, almost same timeframe, just a few weeks earlier. So as I get updates on that, I'll keep you posted on it. I distributed a three-page handout to each board member. This is the condensed version. It's not on board docs. I'd just like to talk about that a little bit. And it is two-sided. So when I get to the second sheet, I have to flip it up. You were all part of the budget meetings and obviously you approved the two point three two percent budget increase, which was about two million dollars. The city manager did his due diligence and his job as city manager. He's recommending a one point three, one point oh three percent increase. Anytime you have a budget decrease, it's disappointing. But if I look at the city manager's rationale, he used our adjusted budget as the base for looking at his increase. And if you recall, during the approval of last year's budget, there was, the city had to make a last minute reduction of three million dollars citywide because of revenue shortfall on the state revenue side. So our share of that reduction was going to be one million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. There was some question as to where the Alliance portion of the ECS grant increase would go, whether it would go to the city or directly to the Alliance district. So at the eleventh hour, when the city had to vote on the budget, they left in the one point two million. And they had Dr. Stringfellow and I pledge on behalf of the board that we would not spend that money. And the board has honored that pledge and we have not spent the money. And we will return at a minimum of one point two million dollars. So in reality, the base that if you wanted to measure a budget increase on, in fairness, is eighty-five million, not the eighty-six million. So using that rationale, we're getting a two point five percent increase. So it's still a big cut because if you look at our budget, it's a needs-based budget. And you just can't say, okay, fine, we can carve out one point one million dollars without harming the district in some way. Some program would be impacted, whether it be supplies or staff or capital or facilities. So now the challenge that we have is how do we get there? Is it possible? So I have some ideas on the second page. And for the new board members, what's next is, a couple of years ago, the city and Board of Ed formed a committee called the FADOC. It's comprised of three city council members and six Board of Education members. Ex-official members include the superintendent, the city manager, and the city comptroller. I go as well. And the mission is to try and recommend or implement budget that might come somewhere in between or meet the city's goals and objectives. So that's going to be happening. Meetings will be set, I assume sometime between now and May. So we can all look forward to those meeting invites in our emails. So where do we go from here? What are our options? We have at our disposal, the board does almost one point seven million dollars in the non-lapsing fund. If you recall, that was set up last year from funds left over from the previous school year. The city did establish in conjunction with the board that fund where you can deposit up to two percent of any surplus remaining, two percent of the budget. And we did do that, the full two percent. And when that fund was created, there are no restrictions on that. So it would be up to the board to use that money in any educational purpose. So we could choose to fund operational items from there. But the intent of that fund was not for operations. It was for emergencies, capital projects, roofs, things like that. So I would discourage using that as a source to meet this budget shortfall. So what else can we do? We could strategically target expenses that are in next year's budget. And if our year-end surplus looks like it'll be large enough, pay for those items now. What comes to mind would be some technology equipment. The capital items, then we had, I believe, two trucks and a trailer. Those are one-time purchases that you do every, you know, three, five, or ten years. So if we were to remove those from the budget. If we were to remove those from the budget. Purchase them with this year's fund, that helps us get to that one point one million dollar target. We can reprogram money where appropriate from the operating budget into some of our grants. Dr. Springfield mentioned that the third SRO is coming out of ESER. We have two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars budgeted in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the other two SROs. We did check with the State Department of Education, and SROs are a, an approved use of ESER funds. So the board so chose, and it was possible to reprogram, we'd have to meet with uh, Tamara and Dr. Springfield and see. How the funds are in, if we're going to spend them all in the targeted areas, and if we could do that, that would be an option uh, as well. We can also go back and scrub the budget, as Jack Welch from uh, CEO of GE once said, you can always find cuts. And we could target some of non-salary expenses uh, to reduce. The other thing is on on page three. Do you recall during the budget process, I identified three areas that were estimates or areas that were hard to budget. We had a twenty percent estimate for health insurance uh, expense increase. I was hopeful that that might not come to fruition, but it's looking more and more like it's going to be real, so um, there won't be any potential savings there. The other two items were our unemployment expense. I had, uh, this year we had, I believe, over six hundred thousand dollars budgeted. Based on where we were trending, we reduced that to three hundred thousand. Uh, for your benefit, I put in some historical data, if you uh, look in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, our unemployment expense was basically two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Then when COVID came in March of twenty, it went up to three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, it started out high, but it's been trending downward. Our, we just got our February uh, claim numbers, and it dropped from twenty-five thousand down to about three thousand. So we're probably going to end the year in around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, but the budget is at three hundred. We could drop that to two hundred thousand dollars and have a hundred thousand dollar reduction in the budget. I think that's a doable item, uh, keep in mind. Whatever unemployment is, we pay dollar for dollar, so we're going to pay it. And I would be reluctant to put the district at risk just to reduce a number to get us somewhere if it wasn't going to be real. I think that's a tolerable amount of risk to reduce that to two hundred, so that would be one budget reduction I would recommend. Uh, the next area was temporary help, and what that, those two line items in the budget is the certified and non-certified staff. That are basically substitutes to fill vacant positions that we have, whether it's uh, due to our inability to hire because of the labor force. Or long-term absences and illnesses. Usually, in normal times, the number's pretty consistent year over year, because if you look at the large numbers. There's always going to be a certain number of people out of maternity leave, there's going to be certain long-term illnesses, one or two. You know, tragic illnesses, few broken bones, and that sort of thing, so it's fairly predictable. I go back to nineteen twenty, that number was five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Then in twenty twenty-one, it ballooned up to seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, almost. And this year, we're probably going to be coming in about one point four million. That's a big increase, but the reverse of that is you have the savings on your salary budgets, because these are filling vacant positions or for absences. So the question is, what should the number be for twenty-two, twenty-three? Right now, it's in at almost one point three million. Will we become more normal next year? I'd be willing to drop that by a hundred thousand dollars. It it could drop even further than that. I'm hopeful that would be, have a more normal and stable workforce going going forward, and if unemployment might be an indicator. And we don't have to hire as many people and they stay. I'd be okay with that, accepting that level of risk, so if we do those two things, now the one point one million target is is down to nine hundred thousand. So um, we could do those other things and get there without sacrificing any programs or staff. Or really having to uh, you know, eliminate things. The other unknown that was in the budget is the increase for the Alliance grant. If you recall, this year, the, our state operates on a biennium or every two-year budget, they have a long session, they approve a budget for two years. And then second year is a short session, we're in a short session now, and the legislative body is scheduled to end meeting on May fourth. Well, what's in um, the current budget for our increase in Alliance is one million three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. We received that increase this year. Governor Lamott, however, has proposed the increase of nine hundred and fourteen thousand. His rationale behind that is he's, the towns that are getting increases, there are towns that are getting decreases. He's proposing to hold town schedules for decreases harmless for another year or two. And the way implementing the full increase is to towns, so. Whether the governor's budget passes, uh, the budget stays as is, or a third compromise comes to fruition, we don't know. Right now, Dr. Springfield and Tamara are using the nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars increase, as is the city, in their planning on how to spend the Alliance grant. So if if the uh, higher number comes to fruition, that would be an extra four hundred and one thousand dollars. And that would be up to Tamara and Dr. Springfield to see if there are any new programs or positions that might. Be able to be migrated from the operating budget and be acceptable to the state in terms of uh, of business policy. So um, that's my update on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and if. Um, though I know there'll be at least six of you in the ad hoc committees, and I'm sure you'll have time to come up with ideas and thoughts. Have any now, please feel free to question me, because I'm going to start looking at this immediately to see if there are areas that we can revisit.
Yeah, Bob, is there any action you require from us tonight, or uh, you still have to go through discussions?
No. Is, what, I think what will happen is, uh, my one-year experience here, something will come out of. The ad hoc committee and the board can recommend something, but in the end, the city will vote on a budget, and whatever that budget is, it's what it's going to be. Um, then it comes back to the Board of Ed to implement it, and if I misspoke.
Correct.
I think that's the process here.
June seventh, I believe, they voted the budget, am I correct?
Yeah, they they do a final vote, I believe it's the first meeting in June, and that's by city charter, all I mean.
Any other questions?
Yeah, uh, my other thing is my pet peeve, the uh, light poles here at Kelly.
They're out again.
There's, uh, yeah, the other night, I was driving around, there's at least a dozen or more that are out. So I don't know if there's a, that's a continual problem.
If if it's an ongoing problem where maybe we should change fixtures, then we would explore that, as opposed to uh, just fixing the same old problem.
Yeah, and uh, you know, maybe we can slide it into the. New school uh, facilities, um.
Well, if it's, if it's simple fix, they have retrofit LED uh, bulb that, that unit that can be replaced, we'll, I'll, I'll discuss it with Matt tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah, so that would probably be a discussion with the the maintainers, or. It may be months before we get replacements, depending on what the supply chain is.
Those, that type of replacing, the outdoor fixtures would be uh, subcontracted out to someone like a DEF or other electrical company.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bob.
All right, moving on to a new business, item number three point one, an action item. On the healthy food certification. The uh. I'm, the floor is open for a motion. I hear a motion on the healthy food certification.
We have to read this whole thing.
Do you need to read it?
No, no, I'm saying, that's what your motion is. Your motion is that whole thing has to be read in its entirety, that's the motion that you're asking us. That was right.
All right, let, yeah, let me read that. Okay, so my motion is pursuant to uh, Connecticut General Statute, section ten dash two fifteen F. The Board of Education, or governing authority, certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools. Under its jurisdiction, and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut Department of Education. Will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals. At all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias. Culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school. Or non-school organizations and groups.
Aaron Daniels, I second that motion.
There's a motion on the floor and second it, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted. Action item number three point two, healthy food cer- certification.
Aaron Daniels, the Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale of, to students. Of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section ten dash. Two-two-one Q of the Connecticut General Statute and provide, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day, or on the weekend. Two, the sale is in the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events. But soccer practice, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
I second that motion.
Motion on the floor and seconded concerning the second action item of the healthy food certification. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Item three point three, action item on the IDEA, IDEA grant. The proposal, which was presented by Jamie Bender in her uh, report as the Director of Student Services.
Uh, motion to approve the IDEA grant for the fiscal years twenty twenty-two through twenty dash twenty-four.
Aaron Daniels, I second that motion.
Motion on the floor and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The new business, action item number three point four, discussion and possible action on the uniform policy.
All right, to get the discussion started, I'll make a motion. Uh, motion to maintain, my motion is to maintain the uniform policy, number uh, five-three-zero-zero.
Aaron Daniels, I second that motion.
There's a motion on the floor to continue with the con- the, continue with the current uniform policy, and there's been a second. Discussion.
I think that we need to really consider what the parents said and the students said when there are surveys. Um, about the individualism and creativity and how the children feel. Um, and like, like we were talking about before, how some of the uniforms are not comfortable for certain kids. Um, and stuff like that, so I would like to consider talking about the dress code again, and coming up with something. Compromisable to fit everybody.
Thank you, Heather, anybody else, Aaron?
Uh, having, like any other vote. I mean, we, the period leading up to that vote. Is where we hear from both sides, and then on that day in November. Though, which is usually more than we see at any type of rally or event. That is, that's what we take into consideration, though it was very close. The votes that we got said there is, that the majority of people have no problem with the uniform policy. Or with with the uniforms. They want us to tighten it up, they want us to use it more often, they want us to use it consistently. And would appreciate some adjustments to it, but the uniforms themselves, or or having a uniform. Is not the problem that we got from that survey that we did. And that was, I believe, is our vote from the, from the, the people.
All right, the the motion on the floor is to maintain the current policy, so um. Your uh, idea is that uh, we reject the current policy. And adopt a new policy, make some sort of alteration?
We we will, uh, we can adjust the uniform policy, because our other option is to discontinue the uniform policy, and that's what. I don't want to do, I want to continue the uni- but as a body. We can adjust the policy once we, once we have decided whether we're going to keep it or not.
Christine.
Which is what the policy, sorry, one last sentence, which is what the policy committee discussed.
Christine.
Um, I'm going to stay with the opinion that I did offer when asked before, that I feel we do need a uniform policy, but it does need adjusting. I still am for um, just wearing the shirts. Um, I realize it's the pants that it's difficult, um, and skirts, et cetera, for people to obtain when their kids are constantly growing. And wear shirts, you can buy them larger and possibly get two years out of them. And of course, the expense is less, and so, I'm for adjusting the uniform policy.
All right, because it's not, that's, okay, the the motion is either we continue with the current policy, or just continue.
That's the thing, I'm against continuing with the current policy, that's what I'm saying.
Greg. I am uh, both against continuing with the current policy and or adjusting the current policy. I do not see a function of the uniform policy that is helpful. I don't see how it's helpful with the stated purpose of reducing bullying. Um, it's certainly not cost-effective from the people that I know and that I've talked to about it. I don't feel that it really creates any kind of sense of community, I think it's just a burden that's being put on families, and some families are able to shoulder the burden. But I think for many other families, it's very difficult.
Anybody else? Kevin.
Yes, uh, first and foremost, I want to uh, thank all of the members on the policy committee for sharing their thoughts. On the matter concerning school uniforms. The discussion revolving this topic has been ongoing since January of this year. And with all of the three surveys recently collected and presented. Uh, to both the committee members and the Board of Education. The committee members of the policy, uh, by consensus propose. To uh, bring about to the board, uh, uniforms with significant revisions. Uh, and to that fact, that's why we are here, uh, deciding whether or not to. Uh, and to that fact, that's why we are here, uh, deciding whether or not to continue on with that policy or to discontinue. Personally, however, I believe that after more than a decade since school uniforms have been implemented since two thousand nine, I believe that it is time for change and to allow our students the opportunity to wear what they want within reason, to express themselves creatively within reason. No political obscene or insulting messages on their clothing, nothing that promotes violence or drug alcohol use, nothing too revealing. And these are just a few examples. As a former student, I have been on both sides of the aisle, uniforms and casual attire. And to be honest, I was indifferent on the matter of both. My priority obviously was education. As Board of Education members, we have the responsibility to ensure that we provide resources to Norwich Public Schools and to create an education environment so that our teachers can teach and our students can learn successfully without obstacles. The uniform policy was designed to enhance student academics, create school pride and a sense of community, reduce distractions, reduce bullying, and other things. Yes, grades are improving, but they are not at the gold standard where we want to see it and that the Norwich community want to see it. We are still receiving reports of bullying and misconduct in our schools. And during the campaign, I met a family of three children who attend Norwich Public Schools, Wokwonic and Global. And the children there who met me said that the schools feel dull and like a prison because of the uniforms. I hope that the Board of Education will consider the outlook of giving our students the chance to wear what they want within reason and creating an equitable dress code policy. The students will have the responsibility to live up to the dress code policy if it is adopted. And must understand that this is an opportunity, but if the policy cannot be followed and managed properly, then we could always revert back to the policy, uh, that we have now. So I say we give the students a chance and they might surprise us off.
Please, 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 don't, don't, don't get me wrong again. Anybody else?
I just had a question, cause we were discussing whether or not to continue or just continue on this uniform policy. I understand, um, in section two, A, I think that's what you all are focusing on right now, but I wanna put you guys to like, uh, B, the inappropriate attire is also part of this policy. How will that be affected? B, pardon, B, the inappropriate, uh, attire section of that policy.
So, um, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. At the, at the policy committee meeting, what the policy committee advised is that perhaps the board can chunk this into, would you like to continue the uniform policy or discontinue the uniform policy? Once you've made that decision, then you would, it seems as if no matter what you're choosing, there would be some action you would direct the policy committee to do on your behalf. To, if you decide to keep the uniform policy, I'm hearing broadly, there would be modifications that you'd like to see in place. That would be the second discussion item, in my opinion, three point five. Um, and if you decide to, to, um, uh, discontinue the uniform policy, then we have, uh, the policy committee has been reviewing a dress code policy that is a, um, a model policy from Shipman and Goodwin, uh, that they recommend your consideration of. It speaks to some of the things that Mr. Seitani covered in terms of, um, inappropriate slogans related to, you know, alcohol and, and violence and whatnot. Um, and so that would be sort of our charge, the charge of the policy committee. Uh, whichever way you go, we'd come back again, cause this wouldn't take effect until next school year, whatever you're deciding today.
Thank you for the direction.
Certainly, that's what you pay me for.
So really, really, we would need two more motions. One, if we reject, if we accept the uniform policy as is, there'd be no, no further need for motions because we were keeping the status quo. If we reject it, then there is a possibility of two further motions. One, to direct the policy committee to formulate a new uniform policy, an adjusted uniform policy. And if we reject that, then it would be to direct the policy committee to formulate a dress code to replace the uniform policy.
Don't think that's actually correct. If we vote to continue the policy, everything is done and, and, and finished.
Correct.
If we vote to discontinue the uniform policy, then we move down to ac- action item number three point five.
Correct.
And make the direction, but it doesn't, it doesn't require two different motions.
Well, it would because essentially you would state, I mean, this would be a rejection. If, if we accept, everything stays the same. If we reject, we start from a clean slate because that policy would no longer be part of our policies.
May I offer another viewpoint?
Sure.
You, you could technically, you know, bifurcate it. Are you generally in favor of uniforms or not? And then you don't have to keep, as, as I think Mr. Daniels said at the onset of, of the discussion, you don't have to keep the same uniform policy. If that's what the board believes, you can, you can vote to keep uniforms in general and, and uh, some of the, the, the comments that came forward can be the recommendation for the new policy. That will take two readings anyway.
Right.
So you're, 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 if you, if you discontinue the policy, then as of tomorrow, there is nothing. So I would, I would be careful with that one.
All right, uh.
So you're, you're, the motion should be phrased, in my opinion, in, in a way that makes sure that there's something in place tomorrow.
Okay.
Until the, um, until the, the, the policy committee can come back to you in whichever lane you're all making the vote.
All right, may I restate my motion?
You can amend your motion.
Amend my motion. All right, I will amend my motion that we vote to maintain the uniform policy fifty-three hundred until the start of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So in other words, it would be in effect from now through the summer until the start of the new school year.
I will second that motion.
Now we have to vote on the amended.
We have a motion on the floor to amend the current, that's the first motion, to continue the uniform policy until the beginning of school fall session, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? If we vote yes on this, we will continue a policy until twenty, until the fall session of twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
I'm sorry?
And then we're gonna have another motion.
That's correct.
Right, so this is just on the amended motion, just putting a date on the first.
Gotcha.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote is eight to one. Now, let's go back to the original motion. Motion for the Norwich Board of Education to continue the uniform policy or discontinue the uniform policy.
In the twenty twenty-two, twenty.
In the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Oh, I'll second that motion.
It's already.
It's already, is there any discussion? We're still at discussion.
We're in discussion. We're still in discussion.
Still in discussion. That's, that's the, is there any further discussion on this, on this motion?
So, to make it clear in my head, we are, this motion is to, whether to continue the uniform policy the way it is today.
Until the start, the start of the fall season of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. If we, if, if we don't vote for this policy, we're gonna, if we discontinue the uniform policy, it's still, the, the uniform policy still maintains until the end of the school year. That's all the new.
And it's current, cause.
It's current state.
It is current state. Got it. Got it. And then, and then at the next, but then we come down to the next one and then we, that's when we decide whether to modify the old one or create or throw it out completely. That's what, that's what three-five does. Got it.
All I.
So I.
I wanna, I wanna make a comment.
Go ahead.
We gotta get it right. We gotta get it right.
This, this, this policy, this uniform policy, really, and it, it happened in my, under my watch when I was on the board initially. Why? I can't remember. It was twelve years ago. I'm sixty-five years old. I don't remember. But I can tell you right now, it's really an unnecessary policy at this given time. We have stifled our kids for two years. And those are the kids who have to wear these uniforms. Those are the kids that have to sit in the school, in the, in the, in the chairs, listen to the teachers. Those are the kids who tell their parents or their guardians, aunts, uncles, grandmas, grandpas, I don't like these pants. I don't like this shirt. I don't wanna wear this anymore. And they come to school in a bad mood. How much, how much teaching are they gonna absorb if they're already mad about their uniforms? I don't see a need for them. I think self-expression, the, the ability to wear a pair of Bermuda shorts and a Boston Red Sox t-shirt to the, uh, to school and a pair of, uh, flip flops or whatever they, they got nowadays is just as comf- and comfortable. And perhaps, perhaps they come with a, a more ambiguous attitude to really wanna be here. I'm not saying they don't wanna be here. They do. But, I mean, God, two years now. And I lived it. I've got three children in my home. All go to Moriarty, kindergarten, second grade, and fourth grade. And my wife has already told me, if they get rid of the uniform policy, you're gonna sit there and you're gonna stand there and you're gonna say, let's get dressed for, for school. And when they say, I don't wanna wear this shirt tonight, you're the one who's gonna answer it. Not me. Me and my wife. But, hey, listen, that's what being a parent's all about.
It is.
Am I right? Am I right or wrong? That's right. I, I'm only one person here on this board. But I hear from others that they kinda echo my same sentiments. They, like I said, they had, they've been stifled for two years. It's the, it's the students who want the, the policy gone. Let's give them a chance.
All right, my understanding of my original motion is that we continue it, the uniform policy beyond the date that we set of the beginning of the school year. So we would keep it beyond what we just voted on the amended motion to keep it to the beginning of next school year. So I don't know if inartfully I should've, if it needs another amendment or not.
I don't know how we can. This way, the, the way the motion is read, it's a twofold motion.
But the way it was intended was for you to pick one.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's the idea. So what you did is you coupled them.
Yeah.
And so it was either one of you saying, I make a motion to continue, or one of you say, I make a motion to discontinue.
No, 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 that's not how a motion works. A motion, a motion.
But we didn't know which one you wanted. So when we were as- assembling the agenda, we put them both for your consideration.
Well, no, that, that's why I picked one.
Right.
And then you voted up or down.
Correct.
That's how it's done.
So you, you did that for the, until twenty twenty, until the end of this school year.
Well, that was the amended motion. So now we're back to the original motion.
Which, right now, it will stop me if I'm going off the, the, the trail here, but it says, continue or discontinue.
Yeah, yeah, but that's not the way a motion should be written.
Correct.
So, all right, let me withdraw my original motion.
Excellent. We need the withdraw of the second.
I withdraw it.
Okay, and let me make a, a new motion.
Hold on for a minute. You were, you were drawing your motion. You withdrawing your motion?
Yes, we're back to the beginning.
Okay.
And I, we're back to the beginning.
Not completely back to the beginning, cause we have a discipline, we have a discipline, we have a uniform policy through the, through this year.
No, no.
No.
That was part, that was an amendment to his motion.
That piggybacked on.
Amber.
Right now, we have, right now, we're back to the beginning.
We are back, we have a uniform policy.
Because I, I inartfully did not put a date on it to begin.
We have, well, that can settle this right now?
Sure.
Yes, settle this right now?
Sure.
Do it.
All right, you withdrew your motion.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, we're back to the original motion.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
No, we're, we're back to nothing.
Which, well, here's, I would like to make a new motion and, and so we can cut this out.
Okay.
Because we've already known, we already have those ideas. I would like a mo- make a motion that we amend the current policy, current uniform policy to begin uh, the beginning of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
No, I, I, I don't think that's appropriate, um, to be honest with you, but I'm, you have a motion on the floor, I'm sorry.
Well, no, it hasn't been seconded, so it's not, so it's.
We're gonna work on changing it.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to amend the school policy, a uniform policy for the twenty, to begin, to begin the fall semester of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
We have a, we have a discussion.
Now it's discussion.
All right, so the, the uniform policy we have now is still in effect.
Yep.
And the amendment would come about.
Change.
The, the change. So it would be to direct the policy committee
Right.
to come up with a, a plan of action.
That, that's, that's a next going down the road. Yes, you don't, don't add more.
We don't even need to do the next one because that'll take care of it. It puts it back in the policy committee's hand at the end of this vote. One way or the other, it's, it's gonna be in the policy committee's hand.
So the motion is to amend the current policy at the beginning of the new school year.
To co- to commence the beginning where it'll be amended over this, oh, we'll vote on this amendment at some point or to change, not an amendment, it's a change of the policy between now and the new school year.
I would, I would simply like to second what Greg was saying earlier and say that I don't personally see, I see what the uniform policy was supposed to, how it was supposed to help, but I don't, I don't see that it's helping the way it should and. Right, so, so you vote yes or no on the, the, on this motion?
Right.
Yeah.
Greg? My vote would be against this. I, I, I see this as a solution in search of a problem. I think there are problems with these issues that were purported to be addressed with the uniform policy, but there's much better ways to go about solving these problems. I mean, one of our board members have shared in the past that we should be doing things based on best practices and research. And best practices and research say you don't end bullying with a uniform policy. You don't build schools, uh, community sent sentiment with the uniform policy. And we do know that many of our kids are against this policy. And, and as has been mentioned, I think we have thrown a lot at them.
As, as we have.
And so I would like to just, and, and I'll make a motion after this and go.
Further on, whatever, run a discussion.
Under discussion, I, I, yeah, I'm against amending the policy.
The, the academic research that we've put into it is, is just as split as our parents and teachers are. There is right down the middle. Some say yes, some say no. So, yes, it, it's gonna come down to us. And that's why this is the two places we are.
Okay, I just, I, I will, I will let you know right now that me personally, I will not vote in favor. Okay, I just, I I will, I will let you know right now that me personally, I will not vote in favor of this motion. And only because I think it needs to go. I think we we could do something different. Um, and let's uh bring this to a call vote.
I think everybody spoke. Let's call it.
Yes, Carly.
I think the one thing, um, I know there's gonna be another action. For me. This really doesn't, what I would like to now, what to do, um, is to maybe discontinue. The current uniform policy is that we currently have a place up until we, um, adopt a new. A new dress code. That's what I want, the timeline. I don't wanna, I don't, do not want us to have something in place. If we don't have a dress code policy and.
Well, we do have.
We will as soon as.
We will.
Yeah.
We will. As soon as it's over, the the our the next thing on the policy committee's agenda is to either. Fix the fix the current policy or start working on the new policy.
My thing is if we discontinue it tonight, there's nothing in.
That's not.
That's not the motion.
So it's it's amend, the current motion is amend current uniform policy. And and that amendment, whatever's decided upon, begins at the start of the next school year. So right now, you've not made, taken any action to eliminate anything this current school year.
Yes. Yeah, and personally, I would vote against amending the uniform policy. I wanna abolish the uniform policy.
That's what I want.
I would prefer to see a dress code in place of the, but that's the next action.
Yeah.
So right now, we're just voting on basically keeping. Well, right now, we have our our current dress code, which covers us through the.
What you have is a uniform policy.
Uniform policy, I'm sorry.
Not a dress code, you have a uniform policy.
We have a current uniform policy which covers us now through.
June.
Through through the through August.
Through through August. Through August.
Right, through the start of the new school year.
Right.
And then Al's motion is to amend that uniform policy into a different form. The morph, but still keep it as a uniform policy.
Right.
So if you vote for it, you're voting to keep uniforms in a modified form. If you vote against, you're for eliminating uniforms completely. And then we would need a new motion for a dress code policy.
Okay, let's let's handle it. I will.
All the question. All the favor.
Favor of the motion presented. All those opposed? Motion doesn't pass.
Okay.
So, what that says, Mr. Knight.
Just have, just trying to help.
Go ahead, man.
Just trying to help.
So now, it 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 actually takes care of itself. We, you don't need to tell the policy committee. We know that's our next step, our next meeting, that's what's gonna go. We're going to commence work on your dress code.
Thank you.
That was it?
Bring it to you for either the next meeting or as soon as it's ready.
Well, I don't know if we have to direct them to have a dress code. Cause otherwise, there are schools without dress code policy.
That's why I wanna have that action item.
That that's why we need, I believe, the action item.
That's fine. And I wanna, my if my intention, my intention was to discontinue the uniform. I want it gone. Put the fine out.
I understand, I understand. No, no, no.
And in that, in this, in this action item that we have coming up.
Sure.
Which I'm gonna bring forward now, because we already voted and that motion got defeated. My motion on the floor at this time is to direct the policy committee. To come up with a dress code policy somewhat mirrored, mirrored, I'm sorry, to what. Uh, Shipman and Shapiro have.
Based on the model policy.
Model policy. Shipman is a Shipman.
Shipman and Goodwin.
Shipman and Goodwin, not Shapiro.
No, not Shapiro, no, no. Aaron Daniels, so moved. There there could be a Shapiro in the firm. I don't know.
Yeah, it could be. I want that, I want that to mirror somewhat in that in that uh in that fashion.
Aaron Daniels, so moved.
I second.
There's a motion on the floor and a seconded.
Yep.
You made the motion.
I did.
He can't take the motion.
No, no, I didn't, no.
He he proposed a motion.
Proposed a motion.
So.
So moved by Aaron, sent it by Carly. I I need a discussion. Anybody have a discussion? Greg.
So not being on the policy committee, I just uh recommend and push the members of the policy committee to consider. Um, especially gender-based stereotypes that are very common within dress codes. And be sensitive to that as you are thinking about how we wanna put this dress code together.
Thank you. I would also ask, and I think it's important. We asked for uh, get a survey for the parents and the teachers on a on a uniform policy.
Dress code.
Now, I'd like to have a, I like to have a survey done for the dress code policy.
Okay, got it.
I think that's, I think it's appropriate. I wanna hear the kids too. I wanna hear what the kids have to say. What do they wanna wear? You know?
Honestly, be ready for pajama bottoms. No judgment, that's.
I I understand what you're saying.
Just make sure you listen to the P E teachers.
We will, we will work on that. Just make sure you bring your sneakers on gym day.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
And no, no flip flops. Should we also.
Well, I'm I'm sorry I mentioned flip flop. I mean, I like the.
Yes, that was a norm. And these packed always, they step on the bags.
Should we also set a deadline date for the policy committee to come up with the although.
I mean, we have a model policy, so it's the survey that will take longer to, we have to come up with a survey. Bring it to the policy committee for its approval, send the, it those usually have a very quick turnaround. But clearly, we're going to need to do this before June. You don't meet in the summer for voting items.
Right.
So there's, we're in April. Um, we've got two months to to do this.
Will it be possible to get a first read of the model?
It'll have to be a first read for May.
For May and then.
Yeah, so we will have a chance to discuss it as a board, the model policy, both a first read and second read. Once the the policy committee submits it to us.
Can we get the surveys out in time and back?
You direct it, it shall.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Is there any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Unfinished business. Uh, action item on policy five, one, one, three. Uh, motion to approve the new policy protections and support for transgender and gender minority students. The uh policy, the new policy and the administrative regulations have been posted.
This is the second read on both?
This is the second read. It's all already done, done once.
When was that a first read? I'm sorry.
Aaron.
I'm sorry, was first first read?
When was that a first read?
It would have been last month.
Last month.
Correct.
Last month.
Well, we need to go ahead and get your motion on the floor. Aaron Daniels, so moved.
I'm sorry, Al. I apologize.
Kevin Zetani, second.
We're motion on the floor. We got a second. Uh, a discussion.
I guess I just have a question. Um, is it just being, is the policy being updated? Because I mean, like, we already, the school already has a non-discrimination thing that, when I was reading it today. Explicitly explains all of this, so I'm guess I'm, I'm kinda confused as to why we're having a separate. Non-discrimination when we're supposedly every one of our students is protected under that non-discrimination.
So you're, I guess I'm just, you are correct that we have a an anti-discrimination policy that mirrors the law on the state of Connecticut. When the Race Equity Committee, um, met over the past, it would, they met over a year's time last year. They requested that a very specific support for transgender and gender minority students policy be created. So we went back to, um, I shared this at the policy committee, um, when 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 we were asked the same question a a couple of months ago. Um, we went back to Shipman and Goodwin and they said that, um. In a broad scope, the uh anti-discrimination policy does just that. But that in order to, um, reaffirm the sentiments of the. Uh, Board of Ed members and staff and parents and community members on the Race Equity Committee. That uh this was their uh model policy uh to support. Um, our our transgender and gender minority students. And so we discussed that at the policy committee meeting. Um, it was agreed upon, uh, consensus to bring it to the board. You had a first reading. Um, and the administrative regulations regarding protections and supports for students are also attached.
No, it was just.
Fair question.
Good question.
Christine.
I'm sorry, I don't know how I'm getting caught behind the eight wall on this, but I'm I'm totally against this policy. I feel that, I'm very, this is a topic for me. I feel that uh actions aren't necessary for children at at um the elementary school age regarding, um. Gen uh protections for transgender and gender minority students. At this day, at these, at this age. At the tender ages that we're dealing with, I don't feel that is something that should be being considered. Um, by the Board of Education. I feel the kids. Um, at this point, I think it would be too confusing for our other kids. Um, for our kids that aren't confused about their gender. We kept talking about following the science with masks. If we follow the science, there are two genders, male, female. If children are going through any kind of confusion. We we don't let our kids drive till they're sixteen because they aren't physically, emotionally, or mentally mature enough. To drive a car, we feel, to drive a car. Uh, same thing with voting, joining the service. Um, there's been so many, um, traumas of children. Um, that have started go, it's different if they've already started going through transition. Which of course, they should wait until they are of a mature, sexually mature age. But, um, totally against it. I don't feel, I and I'm, I, um, understand, I do look at both sides of the issue. I've read a lot on it. I. I just feel our kids are coming out of pandemic with enough confusion. And adjusting to all that that has to offer and to have them be going home and saying to mommy or daddy or. You know, whoever's raising them, who's ever at home. Mommy, I I, a little girl say, mommy, I I saw a little boy in the bathroom today. And you know, like they say, innocence of youth, innocence of youth. And part of this too, um, one of the things mentioned in the, um, in one of these is that, um. The state wants us to say what, that if the parent doesn't agree with the, what the children is doing. If you have a gender-confused child and the parent doesn't agree with the children, child, um. Well, that the child be treated differently at school, we're supposed to go against the parent. And and treat the child as they choose to be treated. And the for the kids who are fluid, they could go from, I wanna be a boy today, I wanna be a girl the next day. I'm sorry, I think at this point, uh, for this tender, these tender ages. I just don't think it's the place. I think at home is the place, and I know abuses take place at home against kids, um. Who are expressing that they might possibly be, um, a different gender than what they are biologically. Um, but that is a whole nother. And we do offer support services to children. Um, as far as, you know, we have so much social, social workers, psychologists. Um, I feel, I I said, I just don't feel it's our place to, um, condone this. Now.
As I brought to the board a few months ago from a presentation that I received at Learn. Gender identity is being, uh. Made aware of in children as young as four years old.
I mean, we're supposed to be teaching them math, science.
No, 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 no. Gender identity is something that they learn, that 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 this is how they feel. This is how the kid feels, not what we teach. And that's, this is not what we teach, it has nothing to do with curriculum. This is saying that they are who they are and they've got, they've got a safe place here. That's all this is saying.
But we don't.
Right, but they're not.
Exactly what it's saying.
Okay, I guess I'm, I I guess I'm still not understanding why we would need something extra. For them when they're already covered under the non-discrimination and the race equity. Things, I I just think that that's opening a can of worms for other people who have other different things going on. And what are we gonna have a a non-discrimination policy for every little thing and you possibly could? I don't, I don't, I guess I don't understand.
Yes.
I feel like a lot of.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I I I.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I feel like a lot of straw man arguments are being put out here that are that are not what this is really about. Students are not safe in our schools if they are gender minority or if they are transgender. And they are aware of gender at a very early age, from the moment that they're born. There is a difference between biological sex and gender. As a health teacher, that's something that I have to teach to my students who are in elementary school. What biological sex is and what gender is. Gender is not a real thing. It's a social construct. So you can be biologically male, you can be biologically female, and in extremely rare cases, you might be neither or you could be both. But your gender is something that is, we have created from the time kids are born. We way we play with them, the way we interact with them, the color we make their rules rooms, the toys that we give them. Everything is colored by the social norms of the way that we treat people. And kids within society who may be labeled as one gender, but know that that's not where they are. Are already feeling confused, are already subject to bullying, are already subject to all kinds of awful feelings where they're thinking, what is wrong with me? What this policy is aiming to do is to say that we got your back and we are there to support you. And I support that.
No, I mean, and I understand supporting every student in our district as well. I just don't, I guess I just, I still don't understand that when I read the policy that's already in effect. I don't. Understand why you need a separate policy for just that. I I, maybe I'm stupid.
Josh?
Um. I just wanted to, with everything that was discussed already, um, point out that I also. Um, felt the same way that all of the student body is protected under the. Anti-bullying and. I don't. Again, I just don't. I think if we. Went forward with this policy, we would have to create numerous other policies for everyone else as well. We don't have, you know, a special. Uh, like a special needs policy, uh, protection for special needs students or handicapped students. And once again, the whole student body should be protected. Same.
Al? Life, as we grow and mature, we learn as as adults, we're learning different things. At the end of the last school year, we adjusted a policy to make the. Uh, I don't wanna use words artifacts, but the the equipment of the Sikh religion. Not a problem in the school. This is what we do. We, me, our policies are mirroring what's going on in real life. That's all. And and you're right, we got, we're going to change as things happen. As we, as people bring these different changes before us. We're going to discuss. And either vote against or vote for changing policies that represent that. And some, and yes, some things we're just being very specific. We're adding to the language that already exists. That's all.
We're adapting to what is going on currently in our, in our, in our world. That's what we're trying to do. Or also, we're, we have to be like chameleons. You have to be able to do that on a consi- on a consistent. You have to be able to do that on a, on a consistent basis. So, uh, to me, for what this policy says, it's creating a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment for our students who consider, who are portraying gender students. That's what it's all about. Hang on for a minute. Christine.
The problem is, a lot of, a lot of these changes that we supposedly are being pressured to make aren't for the good. We're seeing a breakdown in our society, tremendous breakdown in our society of the traditional values, which of course, some people say, oh, so they, they weren't any good. They're not any good, the traditional values. What do we always say about the nuclear family? That is part of why our society is going the way it is. The breakdown of the nuclear family. We have, if you assess all our kids that have special needs, I can almost bet you that many of them do not have two parents at home. They don't have female and female, they have male and male, female and female.
Easy, easy.
But this is, no, but this is where it's all coming from. This is where it's all coming from. People have to speak up. We keep shutting our mouths about the important things. And I, I don't understand why we have to keep changing because.
Because the world's changing, Christine.
Yes, I know that very well, very well.
So, you have to take that into consideration.
Very, I am taking that into consideration.
Take into consideration also the feelings.
But, excuse me, was I done? Did you leave me on the floor? So, my, my thing is, as we said, they are, do we have data on how many kids that have come and repeat, reported bullying incidents? Were kids that were gender confused? Do we have data on that? On that.
What, what do we need data for?
To show that it is happening, I want to see.
If it's one, if it's one, it's too many.
Is that happening? Is that happening?
If it's one, it's too many.
What do we need data for?
Because to base our, our policy changes.
Wait a minute, are we, are we, are we entrusted to provide a safe?
For all children.
That's right, all children.
But I'm thinking of the majority of the kids too, that's what I mean. I'm thinking of the majority of the kids.
This doesn't change what we do for them.
But also, Al, the other part about that if a child is confused, where, and the parent is in an, is in agreement with the child thinking that they're a different gender, that we go against what the parent wants as far as the child. When these kids are only up to the ages of thirteen, they've had young children start hormone therapy who don't even have, their, their minds aren't even fully developed.
But we're not, we're not doing that.
No, I'm saying about the parental part.
There's nothing to do with the policy.
The parental part is in there.
Okay, but that's when they're in school. That's how we're going to treat them. And if their parents, that's on them, that's not on us.
You have no consistency in how they're being treated. You have them, they'll be.
That's, that, again, that's something that we've got count, that's why the world has counselors and all kinds of things.
Well, that's why we have all that here.
But we're going to treat, but we're going to treat them. We're, we're going to make sure that they know. That's all this is. It's words that say, we're going to make sure.
No, I'm concerned, as I said, I don't want, I don't want our other, our kids who aren't confused going in a bathroom, seeing a, seeing a.
And if that's, and if that is a problem, then we will have our bathrooms properly designated so it doesn't become a problem. We can, those are all, that's, that's facilities things. We can fix those.
I, but how, how do we know for sure that that's gonna be fixed?
Because we are the school board, we fix things.
No, I mean, before we move forward with this, Al.
Can I ask a quick question, please?
Hold on, hold on, Karleen, you can't. Do you, uh, do you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Al?
I'm good.
Okay, Karleen.
Okay, so, I think what I've heard from all of you is that, you know, the transgendered is part of our anti-disc- discrimination policy already, so we know that. I think the question that I do have is by moving this policy this evening, are we also saying yes to the administrative regulation that was actually posted, passed for review tonight?
No. So, you are passing on a policy five, one, one, three, which is before you for the second reading. And it is only two paragraphs long. And it says, "The Norwich Board of Education is committed to creating a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment for all students that is free from discrimination regardless of sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, or any other characteristic protected by law. The Board is also committed to providing every student with equal access to all Board educational programs and activities. To facilitate compliance with Board policy and applicable law, the Board directs administration to develop administrative regulations regarding practices for ensuring a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment specifically as such practices relate to transgender and gender minority students." That's it, that's the policy. The other piece is there for your edification. It is administrative regulations drafted by legal that is in compliance with law. So you're saying, are all of our students safe here? That's what's before you tonight.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're saying. That's all we're saying. Don't read into it, because there's nothing to read into.
Well, I mean, it's just like the, that, I'm looking right now at the original non-discrimination and I see it says, "For the purpose of this policy, gender identity or expression means a person's gender, gender-related identity, appearance, or behavior." Where the, where the, uh, not now, but the gender-related. Oh my god, I can't even see. I don't have my glasses. But it basically, it's, I, I just don't understand why, why we're having two. Of, it, it's already covered in the exact same way, like I've read both of them.
It's not, it's two, it's two separate policies.
They're.
Yes, there's one for non-discriminatory, discriminatory, and there's one for a policy regarding protection and support for transgender and gender minority students as dictated by the State of Connecticut Board of, Department of Education. All we're providing is a safe environment. That's all we're doing.
We should already have a safe environment under the non-discrimin- that's, I guess that's my question.
Well, we don't, apparently.
Okay, so I'm just, I was just curious, I mean, we can ask for data and surveys and this, that, and the other of other stuff. I want, I, I'm curious to know. Bec- you know, I mean, I have two teenage children, I have a seven-year-old. My seven-year-old came home from school saying the boys can have babies. That's confusing my child, and that happened in his first grade class. So I just want, I want to make sure that we're protecting all kids.
All kids.
All kids. By the, what's gonna happen with their confusion? I guess I'm just confused, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
You have to, you have to have a bifurcation because you have a new norm in our society, in our society.
I understand that, but I, I feel like it was already, it's already account, I, I, I don't know, I feel like it's already set for, so I don't understand why we're doing an extra.
Sorry, Christine.
Maybe I'm, I'm slow, I'm sorry. I just don't understand why I feel like we have to have two of the same, I'm asking a question.
No, that's, that's an excellent question. Um, and the thing is, is that just become, because it's becoming more prevalent in our society and more people are coming forward, uh, doesn't make it a norm. And as I said, these are young kids, and now we're gonna be condoning behavior that might not be beneficial to them as they grow up. Let them, let them decide on their own. I mean, why should we be condoning it? We're their role models.
I think, so, my question is just why we have two of the same thing, not any of the other, you know what I mean? I'm just confused as to, I think that we should be more supportive of the fact that we already have a non-discrimination policy and we need to do better to enforce that than adding extras for this and extra for that. That's just, I'm just asking a question.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor in a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Call the roll, please. Hands raised, please.
All right, so I have five in favor, something down there.
Six.
Six.
Six, six in favor. Oh, Karleen, okay, yes. Do you want me to?
I, I, I do hear the, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you want specific names?
Yes, I do, please.
Oh, okay. So Bob Aldai is voting in favor, Karleen Sharmalas, Greg Perry, Al Daniels, Mark Kulos, and I have one more.
Kevin.
Kevin Seitani so far. So we have six that have voted in favor.
Yeah, cool.
All opposed?
Heather Fowler, Joshua Chapman, and Christine Distascia.
I'd just like it on the record that I, I'm confused as to, on my question, not the act, like, I'm, I just can't vote on something, I'm not completely understanding.
Amber, does the motion pass?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, motion passed.
Thank you, motion passed. Moving on.
I still have a question about the same topic. For the administrative regulation, when can we provide?
So we write, the administrators write the administrative regulations as suggested by legal. And so we put it on there so that you'll be aware of it and so that it's publicly understood and known, but that's something that administrators do. It's not policy. Your policy is, is the protection. How the policy gets enacted so that it can be managed and held accountable is through the administrative procedures. And so, legal framed this. They, we didn't change it or modify it. It is in complete compliance with the laws that are, that are at the bottom of the document, which is Connecticut State Department of Education Guidance on Civil Rights Protections and Supports for Transgender Students, Connecticut Department of Education Guidance on Civil Rights Protections and Supports. That looks like it's, I think that's on gender, gender minority students. And then Connecticut General Statutes ten dash fifteen, one dash one, and then the Title IX Applicable Statutes of the nineteen seventy-two Act. So these pieces are what we would need to do, but your, your vote in terms of the policy makes the safety and protections.
Action item four point two, policy nine, three, two, five. Time, place, and notification of meetings. Motion, motions needed to approve the revisions to policy nine, three, two, five for the time, place, and notification of meetings. All entertain the motion?
So moved, Al Daniels.
Motion for Al, second by Kevin Seitani, discussion, please. Christine.
Can I possibly have this added to a survey regarding switching the time to six o'clock? Do we know, why was it originally moved to five thirty?
It was done way before.
It was done back in two thousand and nine.
Way before my time.
Two thousand and nine?
And I don't know either.
No, just as parents, you know, if we can include it with a uniform survey, maybe, perhaps, and.
Isn't this another second reading?
Yes.
This is the second reading, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, I did, I, I don't know where, I, I must have been not locked, so it can't be, it can't be added.
No, second read, second read's already, first, first read was done last month.
Yeah, it was, and I, um, didn't even.
One, one of the things, uh, do we have, wait a second, right?
Yes.
All right. One of the things about this meeting revision is five thirty, although it's not really conducive, but we, we have administrators.
Oh, I know that, I hear all day, I know that.
All right, so we have to be cognizant of them.
Yeah, definitely.
Can I finish?
No, I'm sorry, but I, I know that view, I understand.
We have to be cognizant of them as well as the parents. And it's, you know, so you're kind of bordering on a fine line, so.
Yeah.
I don't know why, when I came on here, it was already, it was already five thirty, but it wasn't six o'clock and it certainly wasn't the fourth Tuesday of every month. It was always five thirty, second Tuesday of the month. So, after it was brought to our attention, we had, it had to be, had to be corrected, so.
So are we saying that there's no way we can ask the parents? Because I did ask, I mean, I did ask that at the last meeting was, and I, it's kind of felt like I was shut down, but I mean, I have, I mean, I have numerous parents that are reaching out to me that say they can't be here because they don't get out of work till five. And, um, that, I just want us all more involved. I want us all to have more parents here at the meetings so that we can all work together and learn how to work together. So I would, I would, I don't know if that's off the table, but I would really still like to, you know, uh, what's the word, advocate for like asking the parents about that because, I mean, yes, I haven't talked to every parent, but I've talked to quite a few and a lot of them work, I mean, nine to five. And I understand that, I understand the staff and everything, I understand that too, but it's, it, it's not like that we're asking you to stay every day of the week, we're asking you one day a month to make, so that parents can be involved more and be heard more and you, I don't know, I, that's, I just would really like to consider what those parents are going through that they can't get here and they feel like they're not being heard.
Kevin.
Superintendent Stringfellow, um, would, of course, the time chain happened, you know, before I got on the board and, and whatnot, but the five thirty, does it also relate to the principals and teachers as well? In terms of like, like being here.
Well, I mean, it was five thirty before I, you hired me. So I, I presumed it was always five thirty, but your principals are here now and they've been here, many of them from like six o'clock in the morning. So certainly I would say that's, that's a consideration. And, and you have teachers and parents who do, do come to the meetings. But I don't know the origin of the five thirty or six o'clock. It's, as I said, I, I was hired over three years ago and it's always been five thirty.
It, it may have been at the time when, um, we used to have a, a regulation or it was part of the contracts, you actually had to live in Norwich in order to have a job in Norwich with either the school board, fire, police.
Residency requirement.
Residency requirement. So, that sounds like about the time that residency requirement was lifted? No? Or that was lifted a long time before that?
Lifted in nineteen eighty-two.
Oh, all right.
That may not be the same.
So a long, long time, so. But it may have reached the tipping point where most of our staff and administrators live out of town and quite some distance from town now that they asked for a change or it was implemented that it would be better to have it, you know, a half an hour earlier. My suggestion for parents might be possibly to move public comment to a later time in the meeting. That, you know, that could be a possibility.
I do, that's a great idea.
You know, so, you know, uh, I shudder from putting it at the end of the meeting because sometimes our meetings go very late and that would interfere with parents, you know, putting children to bed or, you know, feeding families, whatnot.
I just know our district has a lot of single moms.
Right.
Who are getting out of work, trying to get dinner, trying to get homework done, and trying to be involved in their, in their children's academic life and
Right.
Maybe we could, maybe if we could talk about getting it pushed down, public comment, maybe like do our reports and then have public comment. That would give a good half hour for parents to get here and still be able to sign up for, I think, I really feel like that idea is a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, that would be a further discussion, you know, as far as reordering the, the agenda. So that's a possibility. Plus, there are possibilities now that weren't available years ago where people can email their comments and, uh, we do allow, this is televised, they're able to, to comment live, aren't they? No, not, not at this point.
No, not the one person.
All right, so, once we're in. Alright, so once we're in person, that's, they have to come here.
Mm-hmm.
However, they can give their comments ahead of time.
They email them to Amber.
And they email them and, uh, you know, she could, did you have any comments that were emailed?
Yes, like email.
Two.
Two, yeah, okay.
I, I mentioned that in the public comment.
Alright.
We just don't, we just don't read them out loud.
Right, okay. Yeah, so I mean, there are possibilities for people to still participate if they're not able to make the meeting, that years ago, those possibilities were not available.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Greg, go ahead.
I, I, I don't know if I should even say this. I see both sides of this. A, a six o'clock start would be helpful at times, getting done with practice and stuff that I'm coaching and being able to get here and get my kids together and get them to their activities, get here. Um, but then also having a later start means I get home later. I might not see my kids before they go to bed and stuff like that. There, there's both sides of it. Just selfishly speaking. Um, but I think it would be a very good idea if it would improve the number of people who have the opportunity to speak if maybe it did come out through reports. That's something to consider.
Is there anybody else? Carleen.
It's, uh, it's aligned, but it's a little bit off topic. And we got to the special meetings, I'm hoping, uh, I, I guess my recommendation would be maybe to, I know you get to determine the time and place. Maybe starting those meetings around six P M versus five thirty, since it's not like a, a regular meetings when we call special meetings. That's just a suggestion to you.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Action item four, four point three, policy number four one five, four one one five. New policy.
So again, you're seeing two different documents, the policy and the administrative regulations.
The first reading.
Right.
This is a first reading from last month, Christine. I don't know, I just want to make sure that you know that.
So this is.
Thank you.
This is the second reading.
This was the first reading, this reading was done, I mean, this first one was done last month.
Yeah.
I don't know how, I don't know. I entertain, I entertain a motion on the floor, please.
Make a motion that we adopt this policy. Aaron Daniels, second.
A motion on the floor and a second to adopt policy number four one one five, a plan for the minority education educator recruitment. Is there any discussion? All right, Carleen.
I just had a quick question. I think I had um suggested maybe um adding some language around the board shall direct um the superintendent to develop like the contacts with the local trainings and um contacts with the local minorities, like rewarding it that way and then.
In the, in the retention plan.
In the retention plan and then our job would maybe be to
Yes, I'll, I'll make that change, you're correct.
Uh, really review it on an annual basis that the work is actually getting done.
Change to the regulations, you're not voting on that one, so I can certainly do that. Thank you. Amber, you took note of that, right?
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted. Alright, it's coming out, we're coming out of unfinished business. We're into committee reports, the Budget Expenditure Committee. I think I covered that um under uh my chairperson. And Bob Zepinski did. City Council Board of Ad-Hoc Committees, well, uh, when I was at the meeting last night, Joe DeLucia mentioned that uh we should be getting emails very quick, very shortly. Um, dates were not formalized yet, but there was request, requests made uh for certain times that we are not available, especially um uh Kristen and or Bob due to other, other committees that they sit on. So uh Mr. DeLucia assured us that he would take that into, into consideration. Uh, negotiation committee.
Negotiation, no, no change from last month. We're still negotiating with the power educators and the um food service workers. Uh, we should be starting um administrative assistance shortly, but uh no, uh, no movement on anything right now.
Okay, um, thank you, Mark. Policy committee, Kevin has put his report together, it's closer to the docs. Um, anybody have any questions about these, that? Alright, let's move on to school building committee. Christine.
We just had our update from the um company that's been hired and on the sixth of April. And we, they had sent out a survey that was out and available for a two-week period. And we had eight hundred and forty-one student responses and two hundred and four staff. Um.
No, I think eight forty-one was the parent.
No.
No, it was student.
Eight hundred and forty-one students, that's what I have right now. Um, say it, um, the kids reported that what they liked most about their schools were the teachers, which that was pretty nice, right? Oh, you sort of, and uh the next meeting, we're having a public meeting, which will be here at Kelly Middle. And there'll be stations set up where on each station, there'll be a different representative from, from the firm that will be able to answer questions um from the uh public, so I, I just hope we have a good turnout, so people really fully grasp what's going on. Um, they did the enrollment study, that's Dr. Stringfellow, they were involved in all of this and they know what population is going to which school and where we're drawing from, different areas, was, it was quite informative the, um, the meeting the other day. So we're moving forward and um as I said, uh, we have our next meeting with them on the nineteenth, but um the public meeting will be on the twenty-sixth, as I said, here at Kelly. So moving ahead, Slobisher.
What time does that start?
They haven't said that, but it'll be going out. It's gonna be going out.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, uh, if I could just add, uh, the, the information I believe was in a Google stock, um,
Yeah, that they're in tone, six thirty, six thirty, I think, yeah.
It included the demographic data and the demographic data basically showed over a ten-year period from now till twenty thirty-one.
Ten years, yeah, ten years.
Yeah, twenty thirty-one, uh, we have a slight dip and then it goes back up, so we're basically at the same level over a ten-year level, so same number of students.
I think it's a hundred. It's only gonna change by approximately a hundred students in ten years.
Right.
Thank you, Christine. Mark, you also?
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Otis Library Liaison, Josh Chapman has prepared his report, goes back to your board docs. Very comprehensive report, Josh. There, uh, I can see where they're, uh, they're financially uh getting crushed.
Yeah, and I wanted to make sure that I added some of that budget stuff, which I'll save all the numbers for everybody to read on their own. As we went over a bunch of budget things already. Uh, hopefully, I just hope that the town council uh takes a look at some key stuff there.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, IDCS liaison, Bob, Christine, do you have a question?
No, I was just shocked at how much they're paying for parking.
They're getting crushed financially.
Oh my goodness.
The town that's, that, they want people to come into downtown.
Yes, exactly. They're providing a service to our community. They shouldn't have to pay for parking.
IDCS.
A few things real quick. So the calendar was just finalized, it'll be voted on by the board at the meeting next week. Uh, I have to send an invitation to the twenty-fifth anniversary celebration, which will be June third at five thirty. Um, the invitation's been extended to all but board members, so uh look in your inboxes, that'll be coming soon. Uh, we just began S-Back testing this week, uh, much like Norwich Public Schools. Um, and some more fun news, there's a lot of end-of-the-year events that have been organized. The track and field team has just started practicing. We've got multiple meet schedules starting at the end of April. Uh, we're in the middle of Healthy Living Week, which is, I get to do lots of fun stuff all week with the kids and the teachers and get sixty-six kids at once and have a good time. Uh, every grade level is doing a player performance under the direction of user teacher Terry Waraneki. Uh, we have the K kindergarten first grade play tomorrow at one forty-five, fourth and fifth grade May sixth, ten forty-five. And the sixth grade, May seventeenth at one forty-five, those are open to the public. Uh, math night, April twenty-eighth, research night is May fourth and May fifth at six o'clock. If you've never been to an IDCS research night, check it out, it's amazing.
Research or research?
Research.
Research, okay.
The kids have been working on research for the last couple of months and working with college students in the past, it is difficult to get them to do the level of research that these teachers get our seventh and eighth graders to do. They do incredible work. Absolutely, I, I'll, I'll send an invitation to that as well, um, so for research night and for um, the twenty-fifth anniversary celebration.
Thanks, great, thank you.
So we have a basket raffle in June, our picnic finally for the first time in three years, June sixteenth at Harkness Park. So we got a lot of good things that are coming back to IDCS uh post-pandemic.
Thank you. Uh, NFA liaison, I um, I apologize, but I do not have a report because I did not attend the uh meeting due to a, a family uh problem at the house. Uh, so I do not have a report to give to you at this time. Bernie.
Nothing new to report, sir.
Thank you very much. Alright, let's go down to item number six, board reports.
Yeah, okay, if I could just make a quick mention, um, uh, CINCALSA had sent out a, uh, an invitation, there's uh events uh around, uh, there's a CIC holiday or something happening on the twenty-ninth of April, there's gonna be a ceremony at, I believe, eleven o'clock. It starts at uh City Hall and then there'll be a brief uh prayer ceremony out by the mural at the parking garage near Harbor Drive.
Okay.
And then uh later that day, I think it's either at one or one thirty, will be the official opening of the CIC art gallery, uh, and lunch is included.
Nice.
So. And uh if you haven't got an invitation, I'll.
Who do I, who's gonna, who's not gonna pay to that?
Uh, probably, yeah, that is.
I hope so.
Yeah, good, good food. Uh, so uh if you haven't gotten an invitation, I'll ask him to uh forward one to all the board members.
Thank you. And anybody else on the board reports? Yes, Kevin.
Uh, yes, for board uh reports, last month, uh, the Norwich Transition Academy invited board members to attend the open house, uh, which um me and a few other board members.
We had negotiations.
Huh?
Didn't we have a negotiation that night or something?
No, no, I went, I went to the, I went to the anti, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I went, I was.
Yeah, god, I couldn't.
It's incredible.
It is, and um I'm, you know, happy with the hospitality um, that was given uh to us and uh to see the, the new building and what's uh being made over there, uh, to help out the students. Um, and it's definitely um a program that's worth continuing to support uh as we move forward.
To think years ago, that was a venue for weddings and, and uh functions and now it's, it's being used for education. It's, the, the place is absolutely beautiful inside.
Yeah. The only problem that they have, the, the wheels on the bus are missing outside, there is. So, so the wheels on the bus do not go round and round.
There's a lock on the, you can't go in the, you can't go in the uh playground anymore after hours. Alright, anybody else have anything on the board reports? Christine.
This, this is something else. I don't know if I can even bring it up now. Um, it's something um that I didn't bring up when we were discussing the um adoption of policy five thousand. I didn't know if it's okay for me to bring up.
You'd have to go, you'd have, you, yeah, you can't do it under board, under board reports.
Yeah, is there anywhere I can do it before the end or no?
Hmm. We can go back to new, we can go back to new, new business.
Why?
She, she has something that she wants to talk about, can't do it in the board report.
I would just, I, it's just one, yeah. Is it all right if I just mention something? I forgot about this aspect of the new policy. Um, that all students shall be permitted to participate in phys ed classes, intramural sports, classroom activities, and other school programs and activities in a manner consistent with their gender identity. I'm grasping from that, that we're going down the same road that they've gone down at like Eastline High School and nationally and um, uh, uh, with the Leah Thomas situation. Are we going to have um uh, boys, um, we could possibly have boys competing against girls in a girl's sport. That's traditionally a girl's sport. Are we gonna, we're gonna be opening that can of worms?
I, I don't know.
No, we're not gonna, we're not, we don't think we're gonna have any kids.
I don't know, I, I, that's not, that's not the, that's not, that's not policy.
But that, that's in it though, that they will be allowed to participate.
That, that's part of the administrative regulations.
It's part of the administrative regulations in accordance with the CIA C rules and regulations, so that's governed by a different body than this.
Yeah, I know they are.
So if our students are performing an interscholastic play, then they abide by the CIA C regulations or the middle school regulations.
And I was trying to update my.
But that's already the case.
Right, I was trying to update myself on CIA C, cause I knew there were lawsuits ongoing. So right now, the CIA C's uh standing as still that they are allowing it, correct? Are they allowing it?
Yes. But that's not before this body.
I'm not saying anything for.
Yeah, it's something we can do.
Yeah, when your daughter's. Nothing, okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say that.
Alright, uh, under item number seven, additional reports, you have the year-to-date budget report, the enrollment, and the personnel report. I would hope that you have already gone through it. And if there's any questions, please speak up now. Okay, item number eight, executive session.
Okay, uh, motion pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes one dash two hundred. Members of the Board of Education move to go into executive session for discussion of the non-renewal of teacher contracts. Dr. Kristin E. Stringfellow, Mayor Gloucester, Robert Zepinski, Jamie Bender, and Amber Ruttigliano may be asked to participate for some or all of the executive session at the request of the Board of Education.
Aaron Daniels, second to motion.
Motion on the floor and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Let's take a uh ten-minute break.
So seventeen.
I'm sorry, we're in executive session as of seven fifty-eight. Well, it is.
Was there a break?
Ten, ten minute break.
Perfect, that's all I require.